Their time to earn Savior grades, they're coming after hours with not asking for any more money. And a lot of them are there helping these kids make up work.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask specifically, since that appears to follow teachers. That's very, very commendable. And it's gotta be a challenge to fit those in through the academic year. You're saying that the freshman academy holds multiple unique events?
Yes, I've kind of left it up to each academy to decide how many times a semester they want to hold the events. So within the freshman academy, I have about four, five Savior, I think there's four Savior grades events scheduled. So it ends up being about every four weeks. In fact, we have one this Thursday. And with communities and schools, we kind of, we come in and we partner with the school. And we provide like snacks and pizza for the event and make sure that all the students get at least one slice. We try most of the time to get them two and have soda and water and stuff like that for them too, that they get to enjoy after they do their work. So nice little incentive for them to push through at the end of the day.
Great, well, thank you, and thank you for what you do for us.
Community schools, kind of, we do a little bit of everything. Our main goal is just to surround the students with every and any opportunity that we can. So everything from basic needs items, I have a little closet with shampoo, conditioners, deodorant. So if a student comes in that needs that, they can come down to my room and get that. I've provided school supplies, before school, after school, homework help, just anything and everything that we can do to help them succeed.
So you're in pretty close contact with the counselors and their abilities are perfect?
Oh, yes, yes. They're a huge part of me being successful with the students and getting them what they need, so.
Great, thank you. Good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Don Merle, and I'm the lead teacher of the trades academy. Those freshmen are really, really lucky. Whenever we started this whole experiment six years ago, we knew that it was going to come down to having a great, great group of teachers in the freshman academy. Because that's where we lose the kids. And it's not always where we lose them, it's where we begin to lose them. Sometimes they fail so many classes that we've lost them maybe in a year or two. And so those teachers henpeck over those kids, they care about those kids. And when you talk to those freshman teachers, they'll tell you, these are my kids. And that's a neat thing, and thank goodness we have them. In our particular academy, we're older than the rest of the academy, so we're, we are doing some things that maybe other academies aren't doing yet. And this year, our focus was community involvement. There are really three types of community involvement. And one of them is teaching kids to be part of their communities through volunteerism. And so we decided that we would talk to the teachers and have them come up with ideas. And we decided that Habitat for Humanity was a perfect fit for our academy, obviously because of what they do. But obviously because of what they could allow our kids to do and what we could do for them. And so we decided that we would partner with Habitat for Humanity. They were very, very gracious and have been gracious all the way through. Our students essentially, the agriculture students, find out what they can do for Habitat for Humanity. Primarily, that's going to be landscaping. Our welding classes, our building, we've got three different projects. We're building railing, and we're building an escape cover and a back set of stairs for the current house. Our drafting program, they are not only, they have gone in, done some measurement, et cetera, helped them determine how much sheet rock they need to order, all of that. But they're also beginning work on the next house for Habitat for Humanity. And Mr. Diller has allowed his students to go out to the new site. They already have their land chosen. And so his students are working on that, coming up with different house plans, so that the new family can see their house ahead of time. Which is something that really hasn't occurred yet. And because they have such a great drafting program, not only can those kids say, okay, you know, this is my house, this is my house. And they can show them that house in 2D, but they can show them that house in 3D as well. And so the family can walk through their house ahead of time and say, man, this would be great, this would be great. So it's just been a perfect fit. But, and our construction classes are working on that future house. We're thinking about ways that we can pre-build walls, so that we can just take the wall directly out to the house on a trailer, set it up, bam, you've got it there. And our kids get to benefit from real-life experiences, and Habitat gets to benefit from our students. But not only that, it's not just our trades classes, our technical classes, but we've got a great group of core teachers. And our math teacher has really gotten on board, she took her students out. They're doing a lot of measuring, trying to figure out real-life ways to save money here, we need to order this much material, let's put math into real life. Our English teachers are really good about doing things with the kids, like, hey, let's figure out what Habitat for Humanity really is. There are a lot of misnomers about it. Those people pay for that house, it's not free to them. And so they're, they just do a really good job of trying to take reading, writing, and arithmetic and apply it to the kids' interests. Which is what relevance is really all about. This is the current house, and this is just a picture of us out there about two or three weeks ago. Students doing some measuring, students learning about how the house is constructed from the ground floor up. Next year, our goal is to make it a little more personal. We want to bring the family that were building the house into the high school and let our kids meet them. So that they can see, hey, you know, we're not just building a house, we're building a home for these little kids and give them ownership of that. And we think that's going to be important. We've got some different activities that we're already working on and that we're, will be working on. Students are, we're getting ready to start here in about two weeks, having Saturday sign-ups, so our students can volunteer on Saturdays on their own basis. We've already had a few students go down on Saturdays and show up, so that's where we're headed with that. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Jane Schneider, and I'm the lead teacher of the Health Academy, with Health Science Academy. Basically, we've had some new adjustments to ours this year also, we're a little bit ahead of everybody else also. This year was one, the first year that we could bring med students back. We brought four-year med students from KU, they're both right now at Wichita State, or at Wichita. Darren Leffler and Brad Herman came back and talked to our classes and spent the day with us. The second, next week, I believe they're coming back again and are going to actually talk to our kids and show our kids what vital signs are. We just finished with the cardiovascular unit, and so they're going to talk to our kids about what vital signs are and give our kids step-to-skillings, and we'll see what we come up with. Also, we have, we partnered with the American Red Cross earlier, and we always do a blood drive, and it happens to fall in the fall. I think this one was in September of this year, it's either in September or October of this year. We also did the, we partnered with the American Heart Association and are going to do a white-out at one of the swim meets this year, one of our home swim meets. And we also did, took a tour of Garnier Funeral Home. They usually give us a tour, and it gives our kids a great experience with something that is inevitable for them. They can ask questions there, we write up questions before we go, and then they write up questions afterwards. And Darren is very gracious about answering our questions, and they always end up with a lot more questions after they go and before they go on. So it's kind of an experience that I drew upon when I, the first time I ever had to go was when I was planning my dad's funeral, he had brain cancer. And so it was a great experience, and I talked to Darren, and he was wonderful about allowing us to come in and give a tour for our kids. So it is wonderful for our kids to be able to do that. We also are going to do a cumulative activity as an academy, which is the first time we've ever done this together. And we've set up a date for it already, and it is going to be, it's called, the project is called World of a Hundred. And what we've done, or somebody else actually did it for us, it's kind of, it's a program that's laid out for us. But we take our kids and send them out into, this year, we're going to go out to the football field. But we've broken the whole world down into a hundred kids, and so we're going to divide our kids up into groups of a hundred. And we're going to talk about how many of them have furniture, how many of them have a house, how many of them have food on a regular basis, how many of them have a job, what that job pays, et cetera. And we'll do it with hands-on activities, so we're very excited to see how that's going to turn out for us. Do you guys have any questions about our academy?
I get the feeling that there's a Health Academy and a Trade Academy versus a Health and Trade.
Yes, and we do work together on some things, but a lot of times our kids are, they're very different kids. And so we do our own activities with each of our kids also.
About working out well.
Yeah, it has worked out very well.
Great.
Yeah. We partner out with them a lot, but we also do a lot on our own.
You just want an academy for pocket cash.
Yeah. It just seems like every time I hear from you, there's just a little bit more division.
And there is, there actually is, we are just, we're starting to kind of invite and influence our own. And our kids are enveloping what is their own now, which is really exciting, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
And Jane, just, Jane's a clean.
I did, Jane, I'm sorry.
You're always coming or going to something.
I have to go back to a parent meeting.
And I have a piano recital to get to.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Lawrence Ray House, this is Lauren Solberg, Jonathan Lopez, and Isaac Alvaro. And we're all from the youth entrepreneurs class at the high school. Basically, youth entrepreneurs is a class that is supposed to teach you business skills, entrepreneurial skills, and a lot of life skills, I think. Last semester, we did a market day, it's called Market Day, it was a project where we sold a product to the other students during lunchtime. And it was amazing, it was very, very helpful in that, and it worked really well. We had community involvement, like we get community business professionals involved. They come in, they talk, and we tell them what we're going to sell, this, that, everything, and then they, they give you input, and that's really nice because it's, they've done it before and they know. And so now, what we're going to do is we're moving into, this semester, we're moving into a more broad sense in that we're going to do a bit, an actual business, like a business plan and things along that nature.
All right, so like he said, we're starting our business plan, we use Y E Academy, which is online, and it really breaks down our business plan. And each class period, we do something new, then we have local community business professional, uh, profession, oh, sorry. Entrepreneurs, they come in and they like help us on our business plan. And they help us like each step of the way, and it really helps us to like know, like what we need to improve on, especially for ourselves.
And each year, Y E hosts an annual Dare to Dream event, which primarily consists of two guest speakers. One of them talked more about how you can become successful in life, and he talked more on skills that make entrepreneurs successful. And the second one pretty much just talked about economics, and he approached it in a different way that we didn't expect. He used the history of rap and how economics played a great part in the evolution of rap. And we also went over table etiquette and manners, what to do, how to use the silverware, what to drink, and how to pass salt and pepper around. And we also had discussion about what is appropriate to wear in a professional business event or occasion, such as suit and tie, overcoat, what kind of shoes, socks. And another great thing is that we, we had some extra time while we were eating to mingle with other Y E students, which is really helpful because like we, we got to discuss like what were their future plans or what they had in the near, or what they wanted to do in the near future.
And because of Y E, we've got, we have the ability to come to local businesses here in Garden City. This includes Palmer's and Sam's Club. At Palmer's, we went to see how everything, like the tanks are manufactured, we got to see the logistics of how everything was shipped internationally around the globe. And at Sam's, we got to see like the insides, how much everything is priced at, what the price point is, what's a good price point. Because they're only making about a three or four percent profit on like every single product. But because of all their memberships, they really recoup all that loss, and they can keep the prices so low. It really shows us inside like the business and what our price points should be in our business.
So like we said, Y E, it's very beneficial to all the students there, and like for us, they, all the things they teach us, they give us these polos that we can either wear as a group, or we also, you know, kind of what you can do professionally, dress up or something. There's this thing called Academy, Y E Academy, and what you do is you earn points for participating in different events, and points directly turn into money. So I think for every point you get, it's either two dollars or half a dollar, I don't remember which way it goes. But at certain increments, you can cash out, and you just, you just click, write you a check, and you can go get whatever you want. And so other things as far as scholarship goes, they have, or things that Y E can benefit you, is they have summer partnerships. You know, they have big ones like, you know, in Wichita, they have people that partnership with Boeing and Coke and all these big things. But in Garden, I don't know the exact ones that they have, but I know that you can talk to Kylie, who is our representative. She will fix you up, and you will have, you can have a summer internship to put down for college applications or job applications or whatever. And then one of the very, I think the most amazing thing is the Oates, they've given us a scholarship. Fifteen kids get $3,000 each year. So this is year three, so they will give around $45,000 by the end of this year. And there's just an application process, and I think they can choose you based on how you, you know, been during Y E, like what you've done, how you participated, if you really utilized the experience that Y E gives.
Honestly, like I really love Y E, like I wish I could take it like another year. I had so much fun being in the class and like working with other students I would have met if I wasn't in Y E.
The opportunities go after Y E as well, because as soon as you become an alumni, you can also keep on earning Y E points, and every single year, you can keep on gaining more and more money towards maybe your business or maybe a project you're working on. So it always advances further, it's progressive.
Any questions, right?
Nice presentation, any questions or comments?
I was wondering how many students are in the class?
We have fifty-four.
Two classes, two sections.
You guys are learning some amazing life skills that a lot of people take for granted, and I'm very, it's awesome that you've had this opportunity. Did you guys know what a business plan entailed before you did this?
No idea.
Oh my gosh, they're like crazy, but that's a great thing to, to just have, you run an overall perspective on. You're going to be leaps and bounds ahead of your peers when you graduate, so congratulations.
Thank you. Great, why don't you have to go on there, I'd like to shake your hands.
One last thing, real quick, Austin and Lauren, get home, come back to Market Day. We beat the previous record, except by God City. So we have to.
Okay, so Lauren and I were in a group, and we sold hatchet t-shirts.
So everyone knows what that is, if they drive, or they can stash hatchet shirts.
And we were able to make more money than any other Y E group ever made in the past twenty-seven years they've had Y E.
And it was an appropriate hatchet t-shirt.
Yes. Because we got logo sponsors on the, or sponsors, like community sponsors on the back, and we didn't want their name on it, it was going to be inappropriate.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I think this ties in really, really well with, with the academy, because we just heard about, you know, the trade academies and all the, all the building and construction and all, and the Health Academy. I mean, but a lot of those students are going to go off and be small business owners and, or start businesses, and this really helps people learn how to do that. And then they, they keep talking about, you know, most of business in our country is small business, and this is exactly, this is a great start for that. So I'm really pleased that you're able to be in it and that we can offer that, I hope maybe we can expand it sometime.
Well, if you really want to experience it, we have Market Day.
It is great, yeah.
And it's great, it's very online, they really are selling their goods, they're competing with each other, and the kids really like it.
From the academy perspective, Y E is housed in the School of Arts and Communications, in the Red Cow.
Red Cow.
So Austin, are you, are you in Health Academy anymore?
Yes, we have, we have kids from all over the school.
Okay, all right. This is a perfect example of how you can do that at our high school, it's not like you're locked in, so. Great, all right, well, come on through, we'd like to shake your hands.
Pretty good presentation.
Thank you.
Well done, you need a pen.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
What can we to make about that program? There's little to no cost to the district. It's funded outside the district by private business. I won't go into specifically private businesses, but somebody would be quite surprised. Other than the use of our facilities and equipment supplies, even the teacher is paid for by the program, through entrepreneurship. So it's one of these things that we're probably going to have to look at, and it's more and more in the future of looking at alternate revenue sources to fund some of these programs. So great program.
I'm Adeline Gurney, I'm from the School of Public Service, and I just like our little statement, we provide a higher education in a different spelling of higher. I like the fact that we have the academies and we're being college and career-ready, because sometimes we forget that some of our kids aren't necessarily going to go to college, they're going to go to a trade school or get a certification or something like that. So we're providing them with a higher education of all sorts. Make sure I put this right. Okay, last board meeting, we talked to you guys about our mock trial. We did it, had a few pinks and things that we had to work on, but we are going to do it again and hope to grow on it. The CSI class did some really good evidence-building. It was supposed to start out as a child abuse, and it ended up as a child murder. I don't know how it escalated into that, but it did. But they needed blood splatter or spatter, and fingerprints and things like that, so it kind of got out of hand when it come to the, to the actual event of the child. But we had the resource officers come in and arrest the father who was accused of this, and they actually went through the process of petting him down and going through his rights and all that and things. Then we had my class actually write out witness statements, and they had to go back and fix them if they didn't write them correctly. So they had all that information out, and then the CSI class did the evidence, the Law Two and Law One classes did, they interviewed some of the people, and they pulled together the evidence and this and that. So we actually had the trial in the auditorium, and when they did the trial, the prosecuting attorneys showed the evidence, but they did not question the witnesses very well. And so the defendants got the jury thinking about that the father was having an affair with the babysitter. You never know where kids are going to take this. And so they got them thinking that the mother was the one that actually had done the damage, and they couldn't prove that she wasn't there. So there was reasonable doubt, so he got off with a non, a non-culprit verdict, so it was kind of fun. Just don't know where kids are going to go. This is definitely common core, because unpredictable, and, and there's no way of knowing where these kids are going to go with this. So the English classes did a cost and effect paper on child abuse in the community, and took the information from that, and we had a couple of their students do presentations for us on that as well. So we had the Law classes, the CSI classes, the early childhood classes, the English classes, and then the business finance class also did the effect cost on budgeting with this trial. And so we're hoping to get a few more of the other classes involved next year. And we were also talking about inviting over the journalism students to see if they would like to do videotaping and reporting and things like that on their aspect as well. We tried to get a few community members in to help us, unfortunately, the scheduling, some of them had to be canceled because of their schedules and things. But we're still going to be bringing in some more of the community members to help us out next year as well. As far as my classes are going, we're actually going to add in the Children's Services Program. They're going to do a report on possible abuse, and then my foundation classes are actually going to learn the process of filling out a child abuse report, mandated reporting. Whether the, it needs to be investigated or not investigated, the system they have to go through, so we're going to expand on it as next year. This is something we did with my teaching as career class, we're trying to get more involvement with people coming into our high school as well as the kids going out. My students had to learn how to write lesson plans and write learning objectives and things like that, and instead of just doing it on paper, we volunteered to actually do a nutrition lesson for the Tiger Pack. And so they came up to the high school, and we did an hour and a half event with them, they did a sugar content of drinks, they did a vegetable tortilla wrap sandwich that was nutritionally sound for them, they did physical activities. And of course, just to add fun, we did the Mentos and the Diet Code, and that's how Diet Coke, or Diet Pop Pop affects your stomach, so, you know, kind of light a little there, but we had some fun. But we did that kind of stuff, and some of my other classes, we do the same thing for Garden, they have their fun family nights. And so my second level classes make the program, the first level class actually go out and work with the kids, so we've been doing that a couple of times. I was really excited about asking, when I asked for participation for this PowerPoint slide, although trade and health are two together, but yet they're separate. Over in public service, we seem to be public service and ESL, we don't seem to combine that much, and last year anyway, and this year, we're combining a lot more and doing activities and drawing those students in as a part of the academy, so it's kind of cool. So they sent me this information at the top there, the top picture, the students won second place in the Garden City Robotics Competition, the ESL students. The robotics club has now started, and they've gone to Wichita and have done some competitions, and now they're bringing in the ESL students as well. So I thought that was kind of cool. Down at the very bottom, you've probably already been told about that, they received, the ESLs received the, achieved 3,000 national winners, so they're being more participating in our school as well. And then these are just other activities that were going on. I just wanted to touch base on the real care babies, which you guys are wonderful about that. They are now going out of my room, and we are now incorporating them into the life skills rooms for the sped classes as well. And they're being used for skill training for some of their work services classes. We are looking at a daycare certification through the Kansas Department of Health for our foundation kids, so that when they actually leave my program, they will already be certified, so they can be hired immediately. Because I made a connection with the daycare leader, and she says one of the major costs she has is she has to have all those guys certified before they can actually start working. And if we can get that through the high school, then we'll have a lot more. There's over 260 kids right now today that do not have a place to go for daycare in just Garden City. And so that's a possible of ten home daycares, and our kids can actually open up if they had the facilities to do so. So I think that's kind of cool. And then, of course, we had the freshman tours come through, and CSI set up all their displays for them to let them see what was going on. So we've got a lot of different things going on at public service, and I think that's it. Any questions?
I did want to say something, I'm really pleased that you're using those common areas within the academies. I think that's, you know, the benefits of having all of those, and it's really kind of nice to see that, and also that what they're learning, like in the mock. And also that what they're learning like in the mock trial, then it's really relevant. Because we can see every day, you can read the hours, see on celebration trials and I think they're better understanding of those things.
Just last semester, I was taking my master's course and it was on family violence. And part of our requirement, we had to read current articles on family violence and child abuse. And I was like, surely there isn't that many. And it really saddened me as how many we actually read just in the state of Kansas, let alone nationally. Wichita alone probably had in a fifteen week period, had over twenty-five reports of little kids dying or being severely hurt because of abuse or neglect or, or something. So it's, it's, it's an issue.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll summarize it, I'll put this in place for you. In running a building that is academy-based, it's very different than the old way the high school was set up. You have to allow them some freedom to do things, but you put the boundaries out there of what you can't do. But you could see some of the things that they're already exploring and doing, giving them that freedom there. I think another thing that makes a difference in our old high school is competitiveness a little bit. No. I got some principals over here. They're competitive about who they hire and when a candidate comes, I mean, it's free game for everybody. And as a candidate, they're after a good math teacher, a good language art teacher, for their academy, not just the high school. And so I think as everything comes together, it makes us a better building. I mean, it's not negative competitiveness, it's good competitiveness. They compete, which academy's the best? As you can hear, they all think their academy's better than the other and things that they're doing and that pushes them. You know, let's see what this academy's doing. You know, we can actually do that, we can do this a little bit better. So again, allowing them freedom, but still trying to keep the boundaries to where, you know, we're doing what we need to be doing. I'm like, I'm really excited about what I'm seeing at the freshman academy. My guess, my hope, my cross my fingers, is that next year we'll have five hundred juniors, at least five hundred juniors that we've never seen happen to mine thirteen years ago at Garden City High School. And if we get into that junior year, and I've always told you, if we can get into that junior year, our chances of getting to graduate are, are very good. So good things are happening. Be excited to see what happens next year.
Correct. Any questions for Mr. Rolson?
I did, I, I, one comment is, I'm really glad that we, you know, have some expansion ability in that high school. Because it sounds like in the future, we're really gonna need that. But, but it, how is the administration? It seems like you've changed somewhat from the old high school to your academy situation in terms of, it's almost more like a college where you have departments that are kind of a little more independent than what are normally staying in the high school. Does, does that affect your ability to, to be, be administration?
Well, it, it really does, because each of these principals are telling you, they run their own school. It's what this, that's my school. Those are my kids, those are my teachers. I'm gonna take care of them, I'm gonna watch over them closely. So part of my job is to still make this unified Garden City High School. You know, we're still Garden City High School, we're still the Buffaloes, we're still there. So, you know, we still try to work on that all the time. But as you all were seeing here, I mean, they're exploring a lot of different things. I mean, you're seeing academies crossing over, which is a good thing. That was one of the fears from the parents, that my kid's gonna get stuck here, they can't move. But you're seeing they're crossing over. I mean, we're learning how to adjust these academies. It's like I say, right now Renee's academy is the largest academy with seven hundred.
It had seven forty, and we're down to about seven nineteen.
Yeah, so what, instead of expanding like what you're saying, there's still room in the building. We're trying to figure out with Steve how we can share that side of the building and still use it in that academy. But that seems to be the strongest academy and it, it did take off a little faster. Trade and Health's a little ahead, ahead of the other academies, but, you know, we're learning how to do that in that building, how to cross over. The purest academy we have is the freshman academy. And like I say, the results that it's showing right now, and, you know, we, Ms. Leicher is doing a great job there. I mean, we have Phil Caddell there helping her and they're just doing a great job. Our kids are leaving that freshman year with more credits, which is another big, big plus for us. I think we're adjusting very well in the academy concept. It's aligned, it's living.
Yes, ma'am.
How are we doing on class cycles? I mean, that might be deviating off of the individual academies, but, but that all gets back to some of what we're able to do and with the teachers we have to college. How are we doing on that?
Well, right now, and Steve's their scheduler, he's smiling over there, and we're just starting scheduling for the second semester. But the first semester, we have more students because we have early grads. So we lose a hundred fifty kids that semester, which really helps us that way. And with a three-year grad and things like that. A lot of our core classes seem to be the ones that are a little more crowded. And it, and it goes back to Dr. Grayton. I know you all are working, we're all working, the legislature could give us more money. We have plenty of room. It's not that we don't have the room in the building, it's we don't have the staff. And like I say, you know, with budget and everything else, if we go to ninety-eight, I can tell you, numbers will go up because that's gonna be one less teacher at the high school. Somebody's gonna take those hundred and sixty kids. Those kids still have to go somewhere to somebody, so.
Well, we, we, we have so many exciting things happening on, on standard of structure in the high school with academies. We've broken that out and yet we still strive for differential, I mean, no child left behind, so to speak. Trying to work with each, each young person. And, and of course, the tougher, the bigger the classes, the tougher that is. You know, I've heard math classes with thirty-two kids in there and I don't know how you do that. I mean, you take your best shot. Different, different teacher personalities work better in that than others. And so, you know, some of the basics are still there as far as we're concerned.
Well, yeah, I'll walk into a class, you know, and I really know what the numbers are and I'll, I'll go, whoa. I mean, there's not a whole lot of room. Beds are all over the place. Most of those classes are honor classes, I will say that. Our thought is a lot of those kids are self-motivated, they're wanting to learn, they can learn in a larger... I mean, if they go to a college, you're gonna have five hundred kids in one class. So they're learning that. And then again, a lot of our kids that are a little harder to teach, have a little learning difficulties. We try to lower those numbers in those classes, but again, we really don't have the number of teachers to, let's say, have twenty-six kids in a class at the moment at any time. And, and I can tell you, it does affect teaching. I mean, it really does, so. The less kids you have, the better. You can make contact with them, the better.
And even recruiting, you know, all, all aspects. And, you know, we want to be sure that, that our reputation is out there in a way that people really want to come to work. And those things that maybe work the opposite, I mean, our recruiting, we want to try to address them in the extent that we can.
Well, there are several things. When we go out and recruit, and matter of fact, that's for one of my principals, that right now at K State recruiting, the technology that we, you know, these other people, these other districts, these other teachers going, wow, I want to go to Garden City and teach you that technology. The new, brand new building, the exciting things, the awards. As a matter of fact, I do need to mention that we won another state championship wrestling this last weekend. To a roll. And the football season was great, debate and friends. Everything is taken off, just like I'm telling you. We perform very well in the state of Kansas. And I think that's attributed to you all and to our lower grades, preparing our kids, you know, to be ready to compete. And that's what we're really wanting to do. We go out and do a job market, it's competing. And we want them to be ready to compete.
Dr. Carlin's offered for me, right, you know, too, that's why it's not the meeting.
But you're right, when we say, that's one of the things the teachers do ask, what are your class numbers? You know, the possible act, you know, how large are your classes? I don't know what to do about it.
You mentioned if we go to ninety-eight. I think I know what you mean by that, but for everybody else who might not.
Okay, budget, we were asked to propose budgets, a hundred percent budget where everything stays the same. We have the same amount of money to do the things we do. Ninety-eight, ninety-eight percent of what you had last year, you get that back. So at the high school, that amount is probably one stat number that I will, I will make the attrition or some other way. But like I'm saying, ninety-eight is less money to do what you're doing currently. And I can tell you, we have some programs that are just growing. I mean, we, Summer Miller is just growing that orchestra program and it's just killing us and we really need more, but what do you do? I mean, she's doing what she needs to do and I, some are slow down. I don't have the staff to, to do that or, and some other people are just growing their, their classes. Ms. Gurney is a prime example. Her numbers have just exploded.
All of the trades teachers teach an overload at some point.
Yeah, we have overloads. That's the way we're doing them now. So like I said, we're, we're trying to figure that out. If, I would love to say we had enough money to, you know, if we got paid for doing a great job and you get more money because you're doing a great job, we'd have a lot of money.
I'd be welcoming.
But I think that's something here that just rounds certain nuances, yes.